Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
Just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, free, and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, is anybody? Diana?
Welcome.
Great.
I'll go for you next time.
Maddie?
Yeah, uh, so at SHS, uh, coming up this week is our second spirit rally of the year. Now, we haven't had, weren't able to do spirit rallies, uh, since I think four or five years ago, uh, before COVID. With sports, uh, girls' basketball is twelve-one currently this season. Uh, boys' hockey is seven-one, and wrestling is ten-zero in dual meets. Uh, over at Terrifil, the modular, modular classrooms that I mentioned last week, uh, should be in by this week or early next week. And at HMS, over twenty girls will be participating in the SHS annual Girls in Engineering Program, uh, where girls from the middle school come into the high school and try out the robotics lab and the STEM lab and all of that resources and, uh, to get more girls interested in those careers and those opportunities at the high school. And, uh, also at HMS, there were four winners in the CT Scholastic Art Awards. Thank you.
Uh, no updates?
Nothing.
Not yet, nope. Yes, well.
Uh, yeah, they're, oh, we, um, are starting the Legislative Breakfast in February fifth, and we, um, we had a, a cave, a cave meeting, and, uh, the Legislative Breakfast has been changed from February fifteenth to February twentieth. A lot of the breakfasts on the state are going on, legislators are, um, eating with boards and, um, with selectmen and, um, with finances. But some of the big priorities that we need to really be concerned about this year, um, you know, art is a science of reading, of course, the waiver, you learn about implementation, the sped funding, um, and some of the mandates, the timeframe for implementation, construction projects, um, transportation for out-of-district, out-of-district students, and that happens to be a very, very big one. And then the, um, forty million dollars, um, for grants for magnet schools that was allocated last year from a hundred and fifty million. So these are some of the big, big areas that we're gonna take, we've really gotta pay attention to. And, and, you know, we're asking those that are interested in testifying, because it's a short session, so we're gonna be comprising, you know, a lot of things and compacting it in a shorter amount of time. But these are some of the, some of the things and the areas that, um, that everybody seems to be very concerned about on a global scale within the state, so not just with here. We all have about the same, same similarities in what's gonna be happening with budgets right now, um, board members from around the state. The board chairs have talked about their budgets, which increased where they are, again, tough year. And, uh, so anyway, this is something that we need to pay attention to. On the other note, I'll be heading off tomorrow for the, my annual NSBA board meeting and, or, or the board meeting and the Equity Symposium, which will take place on Saturday. And we have about eight hundred board members and colleagues and education leaders attending in DC. So, um, this is the Equity Symposium for all of us, and we'll be discussing strategies and trends and best practice, practices around the country. We will also be on the Hill while we're there for the Advocacy Institute. So this is gonna be another year because it's election year this year, twenty twenty-four. So this year in particular, we've got several, um, congressmen and senators that will be coming. Um, Gialcardona will also be coming. So we hope to have some great engagement with some of them because we are very concerned of what's going to proceed from here on, right until elections. So this year will be a little bit different with everyone there. We have about a thousand attendees from around the country that will be there. So we'll be having some enrolls discussions with our Connecticut contingent. We have appointments on Monday and Tuesday with all of them. So we'll be spending some considerable time with them to talk about, um, you know, the advocacy things that are happening in, in DC. And really, one of the big things is, as I've mentioned, is the title funding and the sped funding. And that is basically around the country for just about every district. And what they're asking us is to show data, tell them what is going on back home in our local districts. And this is something that we really need to stress with our local Connecticut contingent in DC so that they understand what, what is going on. So it's gonna be a busy, busy several days. Um, I wish I could say it was a lot of fun, but it's just gonna be a lot of work and also a lot of angst because we really do have to stress the importance of what's going on in DC is gonna affect Hartford. What's happening in Hartford is going to affect all of us. So that's where we are. I hope you can, uh, attend the Legislative Breakfast in, um, State Capitol. It's on February twentieth and, um, in the morning. So we're trying to get as many board members from, um, the Craig Region in attendance and legislators. They're all, so this session will end in, in May. So, um, so that's where we are.
Um, I would like to, um, mention that we had an amazing Martin Luther King Day and Simsbury Celebration, um, annual, um, annual event we have. And we were very fortunate this year to have, uh, Dr. Teresa Bachelor as our keynote sprinkler, which was amazing. And for those of you who missed it or weren't here or couldn't come, um, it will be on Simsbury Community Media. So please check out their website and find it. And it was, NBC came and talked to the student members of our memorial committee, which was great. And we had the, uh, Gertrude Banks Gospel Choir, which knocked the roof off, off the place once again. And, um, it was wonderful. Our Congresswoman Johanna Hayes came, um, and we just had a really nice turnout and a really great day. The intonation sang, which is always Greg Babbel, and it was a wonderful, um, commitment from them as well. But it was a great day. And the, the theme was peace and belonging, and, uh, I was, uh, happy to be part of it and be there. And thank you for all the people who participated and all the students. I'm all set for now.
Was able to, um, participate in some meetings, uh, this morning that reminded us, reminded me of one of the things we do really well in this town, which is partner between our school system and our town side of government. And these meetings were actually the emergency preparedness people. Michael Berry and his assistant, Jim Trefacante, and our fire chief, Jim Baldus, asking to engage with us in terms of preliminary planning if we ever had to open a shelter again. So we did some reminiscing about surviving the two thousand and eleven shelter experience, um, and then talking about, um, what it takes if that kind of emergency, um, comes up and, and where, um, the school system needs to partner with the town in terms of our facilities. Our three shelter, our, our primary shelter being Simsbury High School, so we spent a long time there. And then, um, Squadron Line and Terrifil actually also serve as sort of backup centers, more like warming centers, come charge your phone, come, um, and we went to all three buildings. Myself and our new supervisor of maintenance, Kyle Loveland, participated with the folks from the town and then the principal and the head custodian from each building. And great partnership, and, you know, you kind of walk away feeling good about, um, you know, doing some good work for the town.
Does everybody feel comfortable, like, if we need the shelter?
They, they do a great job planning ahead, I can tell you that.
Nothing.
I was just gonna put in a plug for, uh, the guys in balls, uh, next week. So just encourage everybody to, to go out and see how it's doing in that show. It's a great show, so hope everybody gets, uh, gets a gun. Perfect.
Two quickies. In your folder, um, when we had sent out the board packet, we said that we would also send a document providing a little more rationale about the staffing. So you have that to refer to as Neil goes through his presentation tonight. Might help you with some of the questions or help to frame some questions. And then I, we, everybody gets a copy of the initial building blocks of the Budget Binder, right? We build this as we go through. So it has, um, for example, Katie's presentation from last board meeting in it. And we'll have a copy of Neil's presentation in it. Uh, it has the budget timeline in it. So familiarize yourself with it as you, uh, go home tonight and want to do some wonderful reading. But it does have, I was telling Jess before, uh, in the last tab, historical data, which is really, really great. It goes back, um, we start this sheet in early two thousands. We can go back further, but it gives you historical enrollment trends, historical staffing trends, incident rates in special education, what the cost of living increases have been, what the town budget increases have been. It's just a whole host of data that can help familiarize different factors and where we're at, um, as things come up. So we find it very helpful as we go through, um, particularly, um, board event meetings, board of finance meetings, when people have, have questions about how enrollment related over time to staffing and different things, um, all really good to be able to, to grab from, from here. All right? That's all I got.
All right. So we got caught up in the mindset? Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of the January ninth meeting, uh, minutes, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Okay. Steen.
Uh, information and reports, the budget?
Yeah, so, so we'll, we'll get right into it. Neil's gonna be the main driver of this presentation tonight. So it's kind of part two. We had heard from, uh, Katie about special services overview, um, and certainly there were significant staffing pieces, um, that we talked through, so many of those will be back tonight, uh, as Neil presents, and we'll have an opportunity to, um, ask questions about them as well. But what we try to do in this presentation is give a little bit of the historic enrollment, staffing information, what some comparatives look like and trends look like over time. And then we get into, at this point, what we're saying is still in, in play or still in process is in part of, uh, as part of the staffing request that we may move forward and discuss even further at the workshop. All right?
All right, let's jump right into it. As, uh, our, uh, veteran board members know, this process for us at the central office, um, really begins in November as principals start to plan their building budgets and submit them to us. And then there's an opportunity for each, um, building principal and a few other key, um, department heads to come meet, um, with us. At that point, um, we're really trying to hear their needs. So Matt and Sue and I try to do more listening than talking at those meetings. Let them be able to, um, present what they see as their needs, even though we already knew this is gonna be a tough budget, but we need to, we need to be able to listen to what, um, folks are seeing as their needs in the building. You're gonna see my, as Matt said, um, much of this, uh, new, anything new in here is what I'm presenting. And that's gonna be heavily weighted towards special education as, um, Katie, um, in her last presentation two weeks ago, demonstrated some significant growth in certain areas and why that's going to, um, call for, um, potentially new staffing. So anytime we look at, uh, where personnel, um, is in the, as a driver of the budget, by the time you, um, add, uh, salaries and insurance and benefits together, it approaches eighty percent of the budget of, so we're a people-driven business. That's where the dollars are, um, and that therefore, um, this is, this is really, uh, an important place for us to ground ourselves as the, as the budget process begins. So I'm gonna give you a little context, uh, with that enrollment piece and kind of where we've been over the last four to five years. And, um, have broken it down first with a, uh, enrollment slide that hopefully, uh, demonstrates for you and the public where we've been. Um, and I took it from the COVID year forward, and you could see that, um, in just that amount of time, we've gone up a hundred and fifty-nine elementary students, which is, uh, pretty significant in a short period of time. You know, the picture of stability at the middle school, literally one student difference from where we were four years ago to now, and then, um, equally stable, uh, at the high school. Although this year, the, the high school's actually gonna dip down in this coming year. But you could see, we've been in this period of, uh, at the secondary level, very stable staffing. Want to be able to, um, in a second, show you, we, we've done pretty well managing that staffing at the elementary level with the efficiency of those one hundred and fifty-nine additional students. If you said, hey, twenty students per class or thereabouts, that's about eight teachers. We haven't needed to hire anywhere near that because there was flexibility in the existing classrooms to absorb students, so, uh, and I can show, demonstrate that for you in a second. Wanted to be able to show you overall where we are with staffing, and certainly we are up in those four years on the certified side. And you could see from an FTE standpoint on the far left there, it adds up to thirteen point six-two new positions. Um, and, and the note on the bottom is where, uh, I'm trying to, uh, attribute that enroll, it's enrollment trends at the elementary level. It has required some additional teachers. You will recall, we added several mental health supports, social workers in the last few budgets and some other positions, um, related to, uh, supporting special ed leadership. And, um, in addition, um, uh, handling or dealing with some very large elementary special ed caseloads last year where we added a number of teachers. So that's sort of where the, the additional positions come. We, we have been able to hold the line on non-certified positions, as challenging as that has been over the, over the four-year time period. You could see that, um, and that doesn't usually come during budget season. That happens during the summer when we start to get retirements and resignations and say, how can we start to move some people and, and maybe not fill positions? So, um, always, always hard to, um, forecast, but I think we really do a good job making sure that we're trying to manage budgets as we go along. Um, and then actually through some restructuring that we've talked about, um, actually lowered administrative positions, positions. That's not to say, you know, that, that there weren't other positions put back in, but strictly in terms of administrative union positions, we're down to, um, in the last four years. So an increaseance of staffing of, um, twelve people overall in four years.
Neil, sorry to interrupt you, just for clarification, non-certified, is that paraprofessionals? What falls into that?
Everything that is not a teacher or administrator who's a certified, so a paraprofessional, a custodian, a secretary, every-
Work in the cafeteria, everyone.
Cafeteria is a little different.
Okay.
Because that's a separate fund, so we don't count that FTE. So the, the two that don't really fall toward the FTE count would be cafeteria workers and because of our contract with Salters, bus drivers. They sort of work for us, but they really work for Salters. So that's, um, so tho- those are the positions that I would say are not part of the FTE count. Almost everyone else you can think of is not certified.
Thank you.
Like a computer technician would fall there, all sorts of other folks.
Just, yeah, we're looking at numbers, just like, the decimals, how do we get, I get like full-time, part-time, just trying to, how do we get to these decimals that are point two-three?
You should sit with Cindy Freling after a little while and do, um, FTE counts, literally, a, uh, the teachers, it runs out pretty well, but I, I can have a, I'll, I'll do a teacher example for you. We'll have a teacher that, um, like a specials teacher at the elementary school who's a music teacher, and they do four days out of every six to teach the classes that come through. They're a point-six-seven teacher. So, um, and that, and then when you get into the paraprofessionals and they work twenty-five hours and what a percent, what a decimal that is versus twenty-nine hours versus thirty-two hours, and there's all sorts of decimals. And Cindy thinks she's not good at math, but she really, she's fabulous, I can tell you. So we're gonna take, we're gonna start, we're gonna break it down as I typically do for this presentation of elementary, middle, and high school. So starting with the elementary. And, um, uh, wanted to, uh, bring you back to those days where we were sitting here in masks and planning for the twenty-twenty-one school year, and how were we gonna get class sizes down to between fifteen and eighteen so that we could properly separate kids and give them social distance? And made a pretty big sacrifice in our district to move a whole lot of people who were our key personnel doing our instructional coaches and our language arts consultants and our SREP teachers and pushed them into classroom positions. So we had this temporary bubble where we actually, in that school year, had a hundred and twenty-three elementary classroom positions. If I pulled up the year before that, it would have been a little less than that one hundred and seven that you see in the, in the next year. So we pushed positions in, and then as we came out of COVID and put them back to the support positions that, um, we've, that we have, uh, come to value in our district. The number, just from an enrollment standpoint, when we came out, we needed a hundred and seven teachers. And we had no, maybe one class above class size guidelines really, um, could sort of hit the mark in terms of, uh, class size guidelines at the elementary level over the last three years. So two years ago, we did need to add three teachers. Uh, some of you will remember, all in the summer, we had to add all three of those fairly late in the game. And now we're gonna project another year of, of flat. So, um, that's not to say there isn't some movement. What I'm calling for in the projections is that there actually, for next year, would be one more teacher than exists this year at Latimer Lane and one less teacher at Tooton. But that overall, from a district standpoint, it would be that one-ten that we've settled at. So that's, that, so if you go back to the first slide where, um, I talked about, um, a hundred, it, it, it's how many new students, if you take that twenty-one, twenty-two school year, two thousand and eighty-four elementary students, and projecting for net next year, twenty-one, ninety, in three years, that's a hundred and six more students, and yet it's only three teachers. So there's an efficiency there that we're capturing, um, by, you know, we, um, as I've said before, we look at it every week during the summer, we monitor it, we do it week to week and get it right so that we're getting just as many teachers as we need and not too many teachers. So, um, uh, I think we do a very good job at this level getting the staffing right.
Just a quick question on that. So how are you able to only increase three teachers with a hundred and fifty-something new students? Is it just the classroom sizes have increased across the board?
So, um, if you, if you have, um, a classroom at the primary level that has eight, like, like, let's take, uh, uh, many of our schools, Central Tooton and Latimer, tend to have three sections of each grade. Let's say they have eighteen in each grade, in each class of first grade, eighteen, eighteen, eighteen. More kids can move in, let's say six kids in a grade move in, and now the classes are twenty, twenty, and twenty. That didn't require me to hire any teacher. So it's absorbing kids all throughout the elementary staffing, uh, classroom grid, I call it. And, you know, we literally monitor it every single Friday from March to August.
And we have those guidelines, and current state of the state is we don't have any sections over the guideline.
What's the guideline again, twenty-four?
Kindergarten through second grade, um, eighteen to twenty-two, so sort of a cap of twenty-two. And then third through sixth grade, twenty-one to twenty-five, so sort of no more than twenty-five.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. Where are we focused this year for elementary staffing in terms of new positions? Um, and this is, this is a copy and paste from two weeks ago at the first, uh, chunk with, uh, uh, focused on special ed supports, um, elementary intensive learning needs. Katie showed you the tremendous growth of, uh, uh, just this year alone, eleven new students into, um, that program. And, you know, looking at leadership of that program, we, um, recognize some challenges this year, um, with space, with communication. There've been a number of, um, meetings that Katie and, and, um, Matt and Sue have had with some stakeholders from that program, trying to, you know, really answer some challenges that have arisen. And then we're at an all-time, we will be at an all-time high for special education preschool need next year. So, um, really focusing there. Reading support, specifically at Central School, this is a request that came in. It's an interesting one that I think we have to really take a hard look at administratively. It's some new sort of needs that we're seeing beyond like a typical tier-two, what we would call a SREP intervention of, of a, a, a kid who's struggling in reading, needs a little boost of some extra reading and sort of goes back to a tier-one instruction, and not like a full-blown, like, referred kid to special education. It's somewhere in between there. And so a couple of principals actually put in some requests around this, and we think it's an interesting discussion, but we also think we need to look hard at resources we currently have. Like, what, could the, the SREP teachers pick up some of these students that are emerging? Or could the special ed teachers pick up some of these, um, students that are emerging? So this was a, this was a robust discussion with some of our principals about these new, um, reading needs, and one that, um, certainly Betsy Gonzalez, our elementary, uh, curriculum, uh, director is digging into, as well as Katie Crisula, Sue, all part of those conversations.
Neil, sorry, I have another question.
Sure, yeah.
Do the, the principals and the people you spoke with, do they have a sense of what is driving this? Is this a COVID result of COVID and reading intervention needed as a result, or?
There's-
Something else?
I, I think that's a piece of it, and I also think there's, um, been a focus on, um, meeting the needs of students with dyslexia, and I'm gonna let Sue comment further 'cause she's way smarter about this than I am.
That's on video, too.
We've actually been focusing a lot of the special education professional development on dyslexia and looking at some of those flags and markers. And what we know about dyslexias, when we intervene early, we can remediate a lot of the issues that we might see, right? So it's not a full-blown, it doesn't come to a level of necessarily needing specialized instruction. But if we intervene early and with specificity, we can remediate. So it's a little bit of that, it's some COVID components. There's also a hoped-for shift with some of the science of reading and how that instruction earlier differently, focusing on different things, will help to change that tide. So it's dependent, but we think that those are some of the major drivers behind this request.
So just so I understand, on the dyslexia point, is it, you, you think that our teachers are now better trained to spot early, and so that's why there's more intervention required?
I believe that there is a correlation of some of the very specific professional development that we've done around these red flags in the classroom and the need for intervention because we're knowing better and we're doing better, but it might lead to some additional supports and different ways to provide them.
Did that professional development roll up through so that other teachers beyond just the K-six are now understanding and learning these red flags?
On both the gen ed side and the special ed side, yes. You're welcome.
And then the last one on here is just a, was a very small request, that this is kind of a bounce back. We, we are seeing some, uh, our instrumental lessons dipped during COVID, they are coming back. Um, and this is a current part-time position that would be a very small request to move to full-time. So when you look at that in terms of FTE, um, this was the top three being the requests that you saw from Katie last week, um, which are two FTE related to special education. Teachers in the intensive learning needs program, the coordinator position, and then the preschool position. We have, the request that we are putting forward is for a point-five reading teacher, and then the strings teacher is a point-two. So the current employee is a point-eight employee. This would just be rounding out that person to full-time. It's a pretty small commitment of resources, um, and sort of makes sense for where the program's at right now. We'll see if we can do it, we'd like to support that. And then, so each of these takes sort of the staffing and then ties dollars to that. So if you, if you take a, what we do is take the salary of a mid-level, um, teacher on the salary scale. We say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna project that every teacher we hire is a brand-new teacher. But we also know most teachers leaving, who are retiring, are high-salary teachers. So we project for a middle of the sal- So we project for a middle of the salary and then add a benefits package in. And that's how you get, if you had to look to the second, I'm sorry, the third one down would be the best example. The one hundred and one thousand would be a mid-range teacher with a full benefits package is what they would earn. So that's not all salary, I just want to be clear about that. But you you can see that that placeholder of about a hundred thousand dollars for budgeting purposes is what an FTE as we plan costs. So here at the elementary level, you can see four point seven FTE with these requests. Okay? Gonna transition to the middle school if there aren't any other questions.
We have a strings person right now, right?
We do. This has been a point eight position for a while. We had a longtime teacher who actually vacated this position. Who um had requested to be point eight for other professional reasons, really good ones. She played in the Hartford Symphony Orchestra. But, you know, it didn't, it it, there's no reason why, other than her request, that it was a point eight position. So. The um right now for strings at the elementary, um there's a a teacher who goes between Tooten Hills and Latimer. There's a teacher who goes between Squadron and Terrifill. And then the central school teacher is one teacher who does both strings and band lessons, like does those two things together. So we got all sorts of combos there. Um so I would say when you add that up, it's um right now one point eight plus point five, two point three strings teachers at the elementary level. That's how you get decimals, Josh. So, all right, let's transition to the middle school if people are up to that. You can see again, stability has been our core here, um as I showed in the first slide. Um but we are going up to um for the first time in a while, more toward that closer to seven hundred number that uh the incoming sixth to seventh grade class is larger than the very small eighth going to ninth grade class. So that you can see, um this is going to require some additional FTE. End of the day, I'm adding one FTE to Henry James based on a request. But you're gonna see in a second here, I've done a trick here where what we're gonna do is trade some FTE between Simsbury High School and the middle school. So that if more kids are coming into the middle school and less kids are gonna go to the high school, we probably are gonna shift some teachers, at least a few sections of what they teach, toward the middle school. And we've done that historically. At times it um is really easy to do, at times it's more challenging. But it's always sort of doable um as you um try to make your resources as efficient as possible. So this is what the teams are projecting for next year. So you can see, I'll fo- follow it from left to right. A seventh grade, we're saying three full teams because they have three hundred and thirty-five students. So you take three hundred and thirty-five students divided by three, there would be a hundred and eleven point seven students on a team. And then that group of kids on any given period sort of goes five different ways between their subjects. So you divide by five and then you get what the average class size would be. And you're saying twenty-two point three for that grade. For the last four years with that really stable set, what we've been doing is one grade was three point O teams and another was two point six. So now this is both, because the number is so comparative, the next grade is three forty-three. You do the same division and you can see twenty-two point nine. So those are still, that'll be challenging to schedule. Those are, you know, push the to to make every class in that below twenty-five. Jaclyn Patralla will have her work cut out for her, but she's good, Ben, and I know she'll get it done because she she has in the past um working with similarly challenging numbers. So um and we're, you know, well, we're within our class size guidelines. But that's gonna require additional F, you know, uh two more sections, so point four FTE, more of English, science, social studies, math, health, health P E, et cetera. So here's how I'm recording it. The other requests, before I get into the FTE at the core subjects. Um once again, we saw our middle school principal come forward with a reading request of ki- hearing that there was a um significant group of sixth graders coming up with specialized reading needs. So he also put in a request for additional reading support, given um some of the needs that were being reported to him uh in that area. So same thing I will say to you about the elementary. We're looking at existing resources to say, you know, are these kids that um we can pick up with the reading position we already have at Henry James? Um is there some of some of this that would go to special education caseloads, which are fairly manageable at the middle school right now? But this, again, when I was trying to say, we try to listen to our principals, trying to report to you. This was something our principals were reporting to us as a need. Um but given a tight budget, we're gonna have to really look at that one.
A bit of a unique opportunity at the middle school because we have a reading teacher who is retiring. So maybe an opportunity to look at that position with a specific skill set. Differently.
That's so for reading specialists or reading assistants, let's just say, at both the elementary as well as the middle school level. You know, we've had these kind of conversations in the past regarding math. If you're adding all these specialists, is that saying something about our underlying pedagogy about reading? Do we need to take a harder look at that? Is there something we're missing in in that area? And that may not be a conversation for today, but that's.
We have a lot of questions to look at. What exactly are the specialized reading needs that these students have? Are we seeing themes? Are they by class? Are they curricular issues? Are they something else? And then how do we use our existing resources, both in special ed and general ed, to really zero in on and provide focused intervention? So again, the initial request has then translated into a host of questions that we're addressing with Betsy Gonzalez, Katie Crisula, myself and principals. So certainly more to come.
And the student population we're talking about in this case are special education students.
By and large, yes.
Oh, so this is.
I don't know if that was coming coming through.
So that's a good point because I remember last week I asked about the interventionalist. That we had put in place. And I knew we had put those in place for math and reading. And so is some of this surfacing through them as well?
Some of it is, but this is more of how um the needs are being kind of unearthed in the sixth grade right now. So you have uh students in the current seventh grade who will need continued intervention into eighth, plus this incoming sixth, creating a little bit of a bubble. And we have to say, okay, between the existing staff, how do we really address these more appropriately than we are?
And I'll just add to that, I'll get the number close, correct me if I'm wrong. So years and years ago, this goes back to where we created a really robust intervention program at the elementary level. We called it SRI, so it's the Simsbury Reading Intervention Program. Seven certified reading teachers who are highly qualified and skilled reading teachers that can meet these needs. So when Neil says we're looking at this in all kinds of ways, it, some of this becomes a prioritization of who are the students with the most significant needs, who are the staff that can meet those needs? And if you shift that model a little bit, what other needs are left either unattended or need to look, be looked at differently?
Exactly.
So just so I understand, at the elementary level, we're talking about kids in that not, who needed not tier two, but maybe something in between tier two and special ed. But at the middle school level, we're talking about special, already identified special ed students who need additional reading support?
More tier three and special ed.
Say too, and and this isn't to disagree with Neil, at the elementary level, several of those students are special education students as well.
Okay, so is Scott seeing similar, are you attributing it at this at this point? And I know it's early to the same kind of um causes as as at the elementary school? You know, better identification of dyslexia, some COVID, things like that, is that the same?
I think it's a compilation of all of that. And again, now we've created this student, group of students that just aren't responding to our curriculum and on our interventions. So we really have to take a fresh look at it with people who are specialized in providing that instruction. So I think it's a big mix of a lot of different kinds of needs. And I don't want to point to a causal relationship. I know that those things are all correlated together and we just have to look at differently because they're not responding to how we currently have it set up and structured.
And with the reading and certifications and skill set, a generalized special education teacher at an elementary level may not have the skill set or the certification that this individual, these, some of these individualized reading programs require. So that's what we're kind of seeing. So it's kind of an evaluation of. Who is the most qualified person of the lot to meet the needs of the kids? And what kind of analysis and assessment can we do in shift of our resources to meet those needs?
And you said we have seven specialized reading teachers?
Is it seven?
Uh yes, that's either six.
Across the five elementary schools.
Yeah. I can get that real quick.
So are people with the reading specialization certifications, are they qualified to handle children who have special education needs and their reading concerns? Or is it a different, or is it another kind of teacher you need? Someone who has special education credentials and reading credentials to handle that?
Could be a little bit of all.
It it depends because we have some students that um are currently have IEP needs. And I would say are best addressed instructionally by non-special ed teachers. And I I think we have to look at the our models in a more fluid way and just say at the end of the day, what does the kid need? And which teacher has the best skill set and credentials to meet those needs?
So just in terms of the overall summary here, so what I ended up doing with the, talking about the shift of FTE from Simsbury High School to um the middle school is I just took the core subjects of English, um math, science, social studies, and PE, health is sort of the fifth one on team, world language also plays a part in this. So basically said point four in each of five areas adds up to two teachers. So at the end of the day, we're gonna look to shift two teachers overall from Simsbury High School to Henry James. So when you see this slide, it's three teachers that would be added to Henry James. But in terms of budget, because there's an offset from Simsbury High School, it's really only a budget impact of one of those three teachers. So that's why that slide looks the way it does. And then conversely with Simsbury High School, you can see here this uh at the bottom of the slide there, going from twelve hundred and ninety-three students this year to twelve hundred and sixty. That's that small eighth grade class coming to ninth grade. So there actually is gonna be a need for a little bit less teaching staff there. Overall, you're gonna see an increase of one because um uh we have that request from Katie Crisula two weeks ago for another special education caseload manager. So um a teacher um who would have a caseload of somewhere around high teens to twenty students on a who have IEPs um added onto the current staff we already have. So that would, and she showed you the slide, you'll remember of like what caseloads were in other Farmington Valley district towns and that we were an outlier from there. So she's trying to get those caseloads back to a more manageable level. So it would be an additional teacher there. Um a point two, uh two years ago, the next year will be year three of our American Sign Language Program. And it's popular and kids keep asking to take it. And um we right now have that teacher teaching four classes and anticipate that we will certainly need her for five. Um because I kids want to take it. So um whether that gets offset by a different world language that maybe has fewer kids, we we can't really anticipate that until the kids sign up for their courses. And we've get that information, they sign up for them in another week or two at the end of January. And then we get the final information right around President's Day to start to look at where we might be able to shift FTE. So how does that shift happen? It's a meeting where um I referee the Simsbury High School team of Maggie Seidel and Ken Para against the Henry James team of Scott Baker and Jaclyn Patralla. And we set a goal and we hash it up and we figure out which teachers need to move based on what the kids have signed up for. Like, so it's very student driven about what did the kids sign up for? And where might we have a retirement that we can capture? What department might we be able to go down a teacher? Where can we slide some FTE? Sometimes there's some creative stuff where a certain teacher has more than one certification. So I could have this teacher pick up a math class, even though they're a science teacher. And that's a way that we kind of make the make the stew work between the two. Uh everybody plays nice, but it it does take some work to kind of make it happen from a budgetary standpoint. So again, that's the offset and you can see this slide is showing the marker of what a a placeholder for one point two FTE would be.
Can I just take you to the previous slide?
Sure.
This group has gone over this question before, but just for anybody that may be watching, can you just give the thirty second on? You've essentially, because I think this question will arise, you've gone down the fifty essentially, but your staff can stay the same. Can you s- talk for a second about how the the needs have shifted? And that's why that that number may have been essentially the same.
Yeah, so right now, um there are, there are little shifts between departments on that. Um so right now, we, class sizes are very good at Simsbury High School. So that's why I'm pretty confident that we can come into this um coming year. But there were, in the last few years, there were no sort of needs to make cuts at that point. Um and we didn't have a retirement. So we don't go looking to make a cut to make a cut. You know, like the the, we're very strategic about, like, once we hire, uh, you know, there's a bottom person of the totem pole who is a new hire, one that we just invested in recruiting and we want to retain. And we don't want to put that person on a cut list. And that's who ends up on cut lists. And we try to avoid that to the to the.
And to your point, at the high school level, the challenge is that with a minor enrollment like that, what you're doing is taking that new hire and saying, we're gonna cut point two of your job. You're gonna lose that person, right? And you're gaining twenty-five thousand, right? Whereas at an elementary school, if you go down a section, you're absorbing the whole section, right? So some of this, as we work through and we really think collectively about where we can find efficiencies or things we want to do, you have to think about the amount of disruption, how many people you touch with it and what the dollar figure is you're gaining from it too. You know, it's 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 all a balance.
Can we stay on the slide for one second? Um you said something earlier about the the one full-time person you're adding to the high school would be to level out caseloads at the high school?
Special education.
Can you please help me understand what that means for a caseload? Is that the that the person is responsible for making sure everyone goes where they're supposed to go? Or they're teaching those twenty students?
They're they're.
Teaching.
They're responsible for the IEP management of those twenty students. And in some way, they teach those students, sometimes in a uh uh what they used to call resource room, but at educational support. And sometimes it's through a co-teaching model that they participate in. So um but a typical special education teacher, um right now, they have about twenty-five students on a caseload. And we're. Or more. And we're trying to like make that far more manageable. Um so yes, they're both managing the IEP and teaching them. Did I get that right?
That was great.
So, um, so that's, that's really mostly our um, certified side. I did want to highlight a couple of things that our principals brought forward. These are sort of non-certified, much smaller dollar um, amount requests. But um, we actually some um, support positions, paraprofessional support positions. We've had a really great rebound of our culinary program under the talented teacher, John Agirga. Um, and she is doing some great work, but that is work that we now um, in a very busy um, area that includes sharing the kitchen with our cafeteria staff and working in a dining room with the there, there's a need for some more hands on deck with, working with the students in a growing program. So Maggie Seidel certainly put in a couple of requests, not only for our culinary program, but um, they're also trying to um, really reinvent since COVID, a, a writing center model that involves some peer tutors mostly, but it, it needs some adult support. So these were small requests from Maggie Seidel, but ones where a little bit of dollars might go a long way, um, in terms of supporting some programs that are. Um, I couldn't resist, I, I left this on from last year, our substitute shortage is real. We gotta talk about it and, and um, uh, I will tell you that what a building substitute is, is somebody willing to work basically every day. So that we pay them more, so we pay a typical substitute about a hundred and fifteen dollars a day. We pay um, a building substitute more like a hundred and seventy dollars a day. But they are committing to working, uh, we give them a few sick days. But otherwise they're saying, I'm, I'm signing up for a hundred and eighty days to come in and work for you. And because of that commitment to doing it, they're worth every dollar to pay them more. Um, because, because many substitutes love to do it, but they want to do it on their own terms, right? I could, I want to work three days a week. I don't want to work Fridays. I don't get up when it's, I don't get up when it's snowing outside. Like this is how I'm going to work. Um, and that's great. And we love them too. But our building substitutes, um, we had, we had moved away from that um, system when the substitute pool was excellent. Substitute pool isn't excellent anymore. So paying, um, so to the extent that we can continue, right now, we have one to two of these people in every building. And we'd like to see, you know, at least two in every building. Like it would, it would be, and we can move them around too. If there's not a need for two at Central School on any one day, we can move them. Um, and then, you know, we, we always look at our daily rates.
Would you say, I get all of that. Would you say there's also like soft costs there that the kids know this person? See this person, they're immersed in the culture. So this person comes in and subs, it probably doesn't feel like a sub, it's just, oh, hey, we have Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so. So there's more than just the dollars that I would think.
Absolutely. And um, really good point. And that's one of the things that our principals talk most about. And the value of these people when the teacher is out for a week. And you could say, boy, I'm going to put this person in as opposed, you know, and we, we'll do fine if somebody's going to be out for a day. But when somebody's out for a week, it's going to start to impact. And these people are much more capable of coming in for a week to that fourth grade classroom or even that chemistry classroom and-
Do the building substitutes have to have any certification or specific background?
Um, they, they don't have to, but certainly the people that, uh, what happens is that Cindy Boral, our substitute coordinator, Cindy Frelinger and I tap these people after they, like you probably start out as a regular sub, we get good feedback and then we start to say, how'd you like to be a building sub? And you know, that, so they tend to be people who have some educational background, but they're not required to be.
If I could just add something, I know when I first moved here, I lived down in the East Line area and I was a substitute teacher. And that's what happened. I became like a building substitute teacher for a middle school.
In the event that a hundred percent of the people show up for work, that, that building substitute, they find other stuff for them to do?
Oh, yeah.
One duty, supervised recess, whatever. Yeah, okay, gotcha.
And how often do you not need a sub?
I'll call you when that day comes, Brian, okay? I'm sorry, Tara.
I just said, how often do you not need a sub in a cla- in a school?
Never. So. So, um, I have been, um, certainly, uh, as Connecticut raised its minimum wage over the last few years very rapidly, from ten to eleven to twelve to thirteen to fourteen to fifteen dollars. We were really catching up on some positions. Um, now my commitment to those positions, we've got to stay above, slightly above minimum wage. You can't ask people to do some of these jobs for what is essentially what they, um, you know, can make out in a, a, a low wage workplace. So we're staying ahead of the curve with um, some of our general ed para positions. Again, cafeteria workers, even our, um, this is a challenge not on our operating budget. But um, Nikki Mahan, running our after-school care program, needs to stay ahead of the minimum wage to be able to keep people. So that's something we're, we're always talking about and keeping an eye on. Um, and Connecticut law, they got to fifteen and we thought that was going to be it. But now there is a cost of living adjustment beyond fifteen every year that is going to require us to keep going. Um, so, and then as I said earlier, we also um, I think do a very good job examining non-certified um, resignations and retirements when they happen. We ask ourselves every time, do we need to fill this position? Is there a way that we can rethink this? Um, because we know some of these commitments, if we are able to add new positions, you know, this is where we talk about offsets. Where are you going to find an offset? So um, that's something that is an additional consideration as the budget goes in. So the overall themes, as I bring it to the big finish here, the new requests uh, would represent six point nine FTE. It was four point seven at the elementary and two point two at the secondary level. Um, as uh, you can see, special education services are the clear priority of that six point nine. Um, I'm uh, pleased and I want to be able to stress with this with the other boards as it moves forward. We've been very efficient in our use at the secondary level, that kind of thing of being able to swap between the middle school and the high school. We should highlight that. That is something we're doing to make sure we are um, not requesting additional FTE when we don't need it. Um, the, supporting those smaller requests I just talked about and keeping an eye on labor market trends. You know, our labor market trends, and I know I've also talked a few times about, this is where um, uh, JR Salter and the bus company are looking at his labor market trends. What are they paying bus drivers? And Farmington and Avon and West Hartford and is he competitive and making sure that we're, we're um, keeping an eye on all of those things. So when you look at sort of the roll-up, this is a uh, slide that our returning board members would be familiar with in terms of format. Um, these are the uh, budget drivers for a personnel standpoint. So the top portion is all sort of the impact of negotiated contracts. You, these are contracts that um, you know, based on a normal general wage increase when you add up all the employees within each of those. So you'll see the teachers would obviously be the most. Um, that Amy Meriwether also has in here education steps. Um, she actually did a pretty good analysis. We were under budgeting the number of teachers that were obtaining an additional degree and therefore getting more dollars. And she um, sort of gave it to me a little bit going, like, I don't think you're paying enough attention to this, Neil. Like this, th- these are real dollars and we got to start budgeting for it. Um, so she has done a pretty deep analysis of like wh- what percentage of teachers get those degrees every year and what do we have to budget for? So this, that's actually sort of a new feature that um, has gone into this. The feathering of staff, those of you who have been here for those couple of years, this is the, this is the ARPA money that she built in over three years, you'll remember, has to do with some of the non-lapsing money. Um, and then the other uh, negotiated contracts, uh, ranging from the groups down to um, unaffiliated where we have some, we have had some posi- position removals. So um, that's sort of the fixed cost, if you will. And then the six point nine FTE are about two-thirds of the way down the slo- the slide there. So the six point nine is right around seven hundred thousand dollars for um, what you can see is a grand total um, of pushing personnel uh, forward would be three point one million or three point seven eight percent over your current budget. Um, and this is not, sometimes I have factored insurance into this depending on the year. Amy asked me not to do that. She's going to be talking about insurance at your workshop on the weekend in a couple of weeks. So this does not include insurance.
When we presented to the Board of Finance, the insurance estimate was about a point three percent increase. But there's some favorability in our internal service fund and that's what Amy wants to talk about using potentially some of those dollars um, as an offset moving forward. Oh, that, the insurance, well, you'll remember what happened last year, right? With, it was what was it, twelve percent? I mean, it was an enormous driver in our budget. We've been fortunate with the claims and the projections this year. So to start off in a position that's not really heavy-handed and maybe even have some more flexibility will be helpful with the overall piece of the puzzle.
Neil, just so I understand what I'm looking at, if we didn't add any new full-time people, so anything below the enrollment-driven staff?
Correct.
Just paying the people we currently have on staff, what we're obligated to pay them, we're up two point nine, three percent. Is that right? Okay.
Neil, on this sheet, just three quick questions. The N A G E, is that the non-certified?
That it, that specifically is custodial and maintenance employees.
And then number-
Sorry to hit you with an acronym, but it was not ex-
It's all good. Um, and then two more, um, unaffiliated going down.
Yeah.
Did I miss that?
So there are, there are five bargaining units um, within our district. Teachers, administrators, nurses, paras and secretaries are one union together and then custodian and maintenance. If you're not one of those people, you're unaffiliated. So that means many of us who work up here at Central Office, um, uh, Jason? The tech, the, the people who work on our computers, um, security guards, it's like a mishmash of people that are unaffiliated. They're not with one of those unions.
How is that going down? I'm sorry if I missed it.
Uh, eliminated positions since last year.
There was, okay, there was something eliminated. And then final question, your additional considerations tab, like the building subs and all that. What does that fall in here? Or do we just talk about that on the fringes? How does that work?
That falls into, um, there's a separate account that is a substitute account that I'm not counting in here. And um, so that, that is um, I'd have to find the budget code for you of what, where that lies.
That whole slide, right? There was building sub, the culinary.
Open on that. That is not in this number?
Yeah.
Those are kind of decisions as we move forward, we'll figure out whether we're going to put them in there or not in terms of, of more discussion, but they're not in this, this base class.
Heads up, we're thinking of-
Yeah, heads up that, hey, our principals have asked about these things. We're taking a harder look um, before we roll them out maybe at the workshop.
Thank you.
Yep. Just a general question, taking you back to one of the first things you said. I think it was in relation to one of Justice's questions about the increased enrollment. You know, you said that we had the flexibility to enroll, you know, to absorb these, these students. But I'm curious, if you think, are we, well, maybe if I'm trying to read between the lines a little bit, maybe it feels like it sounds like you think we may be at a tipping point or darn near close a tipping point or?
I, I don't, I wouldn't say darn near close, but if the NASDAQ trend is correct, yeah, those, those extra spaces are going to fill. Um, you know, and that is the idea of, it's always, when do I add, have to add the fourth teacher to a grade level or at squadron line, the fifth teacher to a grade level? And that's what we're always monitoring. Um, and the rebuilt Latimer Lane is imagining four classes at every grade level. And we have not had that in a long time. We have four at some grade levels now, but not all. And you know, that, those are the tipping points of where, um, so I think we're, we're good for this coming year. We're easy, we're probably good for one more. And I don't predict beyond that.
And just to follow up on that, so then comfort level on that, you have the, the appropriate amount of space for all of us?
Um, we are good everywhere. Yeah.
Yes.
Squadron, yeah. Squadron is stressed. Squadron is very stressed right now. Um, you know, Terrafill has never had sort of extra spaces. It's two per every grade level. Um, thankfully, um, Matthew pointed out that our modulators are opening at Terrafill every day now so that we can get our music programs back out there.
The gym?
Yeah. And I'm, you know, we're, we're, Latimer's going to help when Latimer opens. But we're, and you know, Central and Tooten are okay. But they're not, they're certainly not empty.
Neil, what are you hearing from parents and teachers regarding class sizes, right? We've, we have guidelines in place for the various grades. During COVID, we added whatever, fifteen classes to make them small for social distancing. Come out of COVID. Did people like parents and teachers get comfortable with smaller class sizes and want to keep it like that and then push back at all, like from, not just the teachers but the parents, like, oh, I've got twenty-one kids and my kid's fifth grade class. Well, yeah, we can have twenty-five.
We felt that really strongly in that first year back out of COVID.
Yeah.
People couldn't believe the class size at something like that. And we'd go, wow, historically for the last twenty years, that's what class sizes were. Um, and for me, this is always a neighborhood issue, like you don't care about class sizes until your kid's class has twenty-five kids in it. And then that's when I get calls. Any of you get letters and emails and we start to, um, so, I mean, it, it, it's very contextual for people. You know, when they find out like, oh, my kid's class is large.
And those, I've heard rumors, those guidelines, those specifically elementary classroom guidelines were established like eight years ago, it was a change, right? There was a change a few years ago that, were they ever bigger and we brought it smaller or the other way around or it's always been?
We did it during COVID, but we have not changed the guidelines in a while.
Three years. Yeah, the last change was second grade pulling it to that eighteen to twenty-two. It used to be up to twenty-five years ago. And I would say a push point for people has become that third grade guideline. You get, we get a lot of questions on, is it really appropriate to have twenty-five third graders with the challenges we've seen in behaviors or? You know, I think that's the area, you know, twenty-five sixth graders may be a different challenge than twenty-five third graders. That's come up a little bit more.
Are they Simsbury guidelines?
Recent years.
Simsbury.
They're Simsbury guidelines, not state guidelines.
Yeah. I can tell you when it really comes up is when you have forty-eight second graders that are sixteen, sixteen and sixteen. And then you say, well, for third grade, we're going to make that into two classes. And then-
Twenty-four, twenty-
Twenty-four.
Of twenty-four each. And then I have to uh, stay out of the grocery store. Not that I really go to the grocery store.
I still-
Great, um.
Perfect. Yeah. I invited Jason out tonight. We did this once earlier in the year and prior to the workshop where we can dig a little more into that six-year and twelve-year outlook. Um, I just wanted Jason to do another touch base on what are year one projects? Because at the end of the day, that's what the board votes on. They vote on the year one of the six-year capital. Um, and I, I do believe with the kind of- And I, I do believe with the kind of challenge we have ahead of us. There will be conversation with the Board of Finance on prioritizing capital versus operating, and are you able to move things out? And that's something that, you know, board members that have been here know will come into play and is a real challenge for us, you know? So Jason, go ahead.
So we're bringing forward four capital projects. The first one is the roof placement at Tooten Hills, this is not the entire roof, this is two of the four sections of the roof. Specifically, it's the roof over the cafeteria and the roof over the ring that holds both the library and the art classrooms. So that back was built in two thousand. We try to replace roofs in a twenty to twenty-four-year timeframe. The roofs in question here, one was from nineteen ninety-five, one was from two thousand, so we are stressing that. There aren't specific issues with that roof, we're not seeing an unusual amount of leaks per se. But again, it's more of a staying on top of the maintenance and not letting the roofs go too far beyond their warranted expected life. The next piece is at the high school, the auditorium and amphitheater improvements. So within the amphitheater, we're looking at replacing carpeting and seating, and in the auditorium, replacing the theater lights. Just as a side note, the amphitheater was used as a makeshift cafeteria during the COVID years. So that carpet has seen more stress than it normally would have. So that's, that's one of the ones that I'm pushing on to. The next piece is district network infrastructure. This is an amount that we ask for every other year to maintain our servers, routers, switches, all the, the back-of-the-house network infrastructure. And the last piece is a new every other year that we're, that we're talking about doing. We've, we've seen good success on updating and keeping up to date with the network by using capital dollars every other year. So we looked at things like flooring and also pavement, and adding those in as every other year projects. In the past, we've tried to use capital non-recurring, the C N R dollars for that. But it's fairly difficult to keep these projects moving and, and stay on top of torn carpets and worn-out tiles. So we're looking to package these into every other year projects instead. So that'll be a new, a new initiative for us, but certainly something that we'd like to do a better job on maintaining.
Is the part of the problems, I'm sorry. Is the part of the problem with the C N R budgets, it's just too limited, especially when you put two budgets, or two buses?
Yeah, the, the buses is the big problem, although I would say just generally having that cap for such a long amount of time at the same dollar amount. When our maintenance costs have, have increased has been difficult as well.
How long has that number been at that level?
Thirty years?
Oh, my gosh.
So that's, that's been a difficult, it's been difficult to do things like flooring with that, when, when the school buses come out of it is.
Just a question on the Tooten Hills roof, so there are no issue, like major issues with it or leaks or things like this? This is just a, every twenty, twenty-five years, we replace the roof? Okay, can it stretch another year or two?
Well, it can and, and has been, like I say, part of this is from nineteen ninety-five, so we're already out of, out of that range. We do, we have, we do, if, if we're in a particularly tight place, this is something we can certainly look at. Ahead of some of the other projects that I would say are more safety-related.
Because that was gonna be my question is, you know, if you had to look at this and say, I mean, one thing you can do, what would it be?
Yeah, if push came to shove, that's, that's a large amount to push a year if we had to. I would just caution and say, when you look down the road in the, in the six-year plan, twelve-year plan. That, that million dollars that we're trying to push into the next year is, is coming into a crowded location if we do push it.
Can this be done in two parts? Could you do, you know, half of the one-point-one now and then half next year?
We can look at that, this, this particular section. Doesn't lend itself well to that, but it's not something we, we can't investigate.
And the other thing that'll be interesting, as we get down the road and we think about capital, and we come together with the Board of Finance, it's not a dollar-for-dollar savings like an operating company, right? So you can move half of this project out, but it's not gonna lower the bottom line like you think it would because of bonding costs and how they have that figured in. So it's an interesting look and conversation that we have in totality. It's called the mill rate worksheet, you start putting all the figures in, and we'll be able to see, all right, if you just held all capital for a year, what would the impact be? If you did half capital for the year, what, what would the impact be? And that gives you a better feel for, like I said, what's the magnitude of the decisions you're making? You know, is it a high-risk decision to move this one-point-one million out, when it actually didn't move the debt service line much? Didn't change the mill rate much, as opposed to you find a way to reallocate four to six FTE on the operating side. Bottom line dollars, you know, so it's, you'll see how it comes together in the end when we put, put it all together, but it's, it's a complicated soup.
I just have a general housekeeping, because I'm curious, question. In my own home, I find carpets to be a pain in the butt to clean.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Are we allowed to like, are we allowed to just say, maybe we'll put, pay a little more money and get in like non-carpet floors?
We've generally been, been working under sort of a, let's move towards tile manifesto in pretty much every space. Especially if you're like Latimer, the new construction, like there's almost no carpet that's longer in there.
It's definitely a better.
Because I, I was gonna say the same thing, I mean, I, I think about carpet and I just go, ugh.
Yeah, and when I mentioned the amphitheater carpet, I, I probably didn't specify this, I'm not putting new carpet back in there, it's tile, that's.
Oh, it is.
Yes. Didn't mean to.
Yeah, that was a short term, because it was tile and then it was carpet, and now, yeah, carpet wasn't a good play.
And you hit on it a little bit, Jason, but these four things are what you view as the foremost important of a crowded list. That's two, three, four, five, six years, we're gonna see all those other things on February third, right? That's usually, that's how that works, so you'll see everything else.
It's in our book right now, if you look.
So I, I just, I know this was only additional considerations, but I just wanted to ask something for clarification. The writing, the writing center support, what's happening now? I mean, we don't have one, or we do, or is somebody else?
It was, it's, it was being, go ahead.
So, one teacher in particular, it's, it's, they're re-looking at a revamp. So you have some certified teachers in there as duties, but not, it's dependent upon teacher schedules and when they're free. You have a level of peer support, and they're looking for some extra non-certified staff to make sure that it can be open all periods. To meet students' needs, that's what that is. But one teacher in particular has taken on some pretty significant efforts to revamp that intervention.
And so when I think, I mean, and the support that they get, is it with, you know, can it be, you know, eleventh and twelfth graders with their. Prep for college, applications and all that, is that just?
All of that, and different kinds of writing and assignments, and, you know, I'm struggling with this piece on elaboration. And I just need to go in and get a little peer booster versus some more significant support from a certified teacher.
I, I am a writing tutor in the center. And currently, it, it changes per quarter based on the teacher's schedule, but it's like, periods one, five, and seven. There'll be a teacher, an English teacher, open to man the station, the, the room. And then you can have tutors sitting in there for walk-in appointments, but it's kind of not really helpful. Because the student body doesn't really know when the center's open, because it's not open the entire day.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Amy is not feeling well, unfortunately.
Bad time to get sick.
Yes, tough time, but she'll, she'll be back tomorrow. But the, a couple of things I wanted to share on this, but to let you know, one of the significant things we'll work through at the workshop. Our year-end projections in our major categories, so we'll really take kind of a deep dive into, are we forecasting any deficit areas? And what are we thinking about there? But in a nutshell, our grant revenues this year are pretty stable outside of the excess cost grant for special ed that we talked about. At, at length in the last meeting. So from a grant standpoint, we're, we're pretty good in terms of what those budgets look like. Our two biggest challenges are special education transportation. In terms of the dollars we're spending on a third-party outside of Salters because of capacity, that's, that's what that is. And then the tuition increases with our contracted students in outplacement programs. We'll recall last year that we asked for an increase of five-hundred thousand dollars in that line item. We received that increase, we had a lot of support from the Board of Finance on that. The tuitions of that same group of students, that's pretty stable now, went up ten to fourteen percent, which ate up that increase. And basically moved that deficit. So those are the two areas we need to really look at and think about as we move forward in our budget and in our projections. Lisa and the Board of Fin, they haven't had the meeting yet, but Lisa's aware of those, of those areas in terms of their overall planning and a potential deficit this year. But there are things we do as the year goes on, obviously, to try to close that and maneuver things, but we'll get a deeper look into that. At the, at the workshop, in terms of just seeing the line items going through and giving you an opportunity to really dig into any questions that you have.
Matt, we didn't get that number last week, only two weeks ago, the transportation number, she didn't have that.
Yeah, it wasn't included.
In terms of the.
Is for those outer district, especially.
I think it was ninety thousand per student on the educational side, but there was, that did, was not inclusive of transportation.
I don't know the total number, I know we're running in the rears about four-hundred thousand on it. But I can get that for you. Yep.
It'll definitely be there.
Oh, yeah.
Public audience? Great, well then, our next board member, board meeting is February thirteenth, we're back here.
A motion to adjourn. Anyone second? Are we gonna stay here?
We'll stay here.
Okay, good plan, good plan.